There you go. Spirit of volunteerism.
I don't have to sing the national anthem, I'm good.
Actually, Anton has a really good voice if you ever want him to sing.
Well, it's just supposed to be him, I know.
And he could bring his own choir with him.
We have a few minutes before we start, or not even a few minutes, right? Oh, that's wrong. Oh, we're past, according to mine.
We're ready.
Calling the meeting to order.
Are we on?
We are live, yes.
Thank you. The City of North Pole, regular meeting of the City of Chamber of Council. Regular, as, no, city, I'm lost. Let's start this over. The City of North Pole, regular council meeting. Can you call the role?
For the January 2nd regular council meeting, Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Williamson? Mr. Williams? Mr. Church? Mr. Skips? Ms. Clack?
Here.
Mr. Keller? And Mayor Welch is absent.
Okay, we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Yeah, we moved.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for Benny to do the confrontation.
Your Father, we thank you for everyone gathered here now. Thank you that you know each of us by name and have caused us to walk with you. We say that we are dependent on you and our trust is in you completely. As you surrender yourselves, in we ask that you would come by your Holy Spirit and inspire our hearts today. Come fill our hearts, come fill our lives with your love. Fill our conversations with your grace and truth. Fill this meeting with your presence. We ask this for your glory and praise. Amen.
Amen.
Seated? Approval of the agenda.
Move to approve second.
Approval of the minutes?
Oh, excuse me. Was there anything that was going to be consent agenda or, okay?
No.
So on the motion to approve the agenda, Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
And Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Now we'll go into approval of the minutes.
Approve the minutes for December 18th, 23.
On the approval of the minutes, Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
That brings us to communications from the mayor.
At this point, I don't have anything except for the committees that we have listed. We have a few open on the borough that we need to slot in, and we are trying to complete our ethics. So we just have one more person that we need to fill on that, and were any questions on any of the committees that were set before you guys?
I will volunteer for the August 22nd Borough Assembly Meeting.
And then I will go for September. I'll do September and November.
Do you want the first September meeting?
Yes. And then the 14th of November? And then I'll probably take in December.
The 20, December 2024?
Yes. And that's borrowing where we stand.
Okay.
Okay. I have an answer. Yes, we, we voted collectively that we just go one meeting a month, okay? But if you find that there might be something that's coming up, just let Emily know that you want to go, okay? Because we do want to make sure that we cover if there's something with us that we need to be there, is what I would prefer. So even though we're saying we're going one meeting a month, but you find that your date, there's really nothing that has to do with the City of North Pole, but the following meeting is, but nobody's going, then that would be fine, okay? I think that would be the stipulation.
So we have four months that are not covered. January, March, July is one meeting, and October.
So with that being said, if nobody's going to try to take January, I will try to take it borrowing what's going to happen presently, okay? So I would like to try to go for the 11th, but I am not for sure yet. So if nobody else is taking January, I will try to do it, okay?
Is that for both January meetings, just the first?
And we'll just see. My goal is the 11th.
Gotcha.
But if it doesn't come about, then I'll take the second one.
Basically, we're just taking the month, one or one of the other meeting.
Yeah, because it looks like everybody wants to try to do whatever convenience in their schedule, correct? As you're pointing out, July.
October.
And October.
And March are left open.
Right. Okay. Any questions? Okay. Moving forward.
Um, that brings us to, let's see, Councilmember questions of the mayor.
Seeing none.
Which brings us to ongoing projects, and we have Scott with Explore Fairbanks.
Thank you, Scott, for coming out.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Do we skip citizens' comments and communications from department heads?
Yes, we did.
We're batting a thousand.
I'm sorry, Scott. We are at citizens' comments. Are there any comments from citizens here? Nobody online.
Nobody online, okay. Moving to communication from departments. Let's start with Paul. Yeah, you. I like that. No, there's only one in the building.
Yeah, pretty much. Ah, for Public Works, they've done their fourth snow plowing of the year. This included the hard pack removal that's continuing on right now. They had to shut it down for a little bit because of the cold temperatures, but that regained steam this morning to complete the hard pack removal. They did it last year twice, and it really seemed to help a lot in that spring hard pack removal. So they're trying it again this year, which is great. Building Department has slowed down considerably. It's starting to pick back up with people having questions about any changes to code for next building season. Now, all these things going downhill, uphill, as the temperature.
Okay.
Not much is going on in utilities, other than the RFP for the city water system replacement. That'll be closed January 17th at 2:00 PM and on the website and advertised in the news minor. Award recommendation will be presented to the council during the first meeting in February for that. All that we, unless you have other questions.
Any questions?
City Services Department.
Yes, Skips.
Yeah, is there status on that light pole that got knocked down? Is it up? Okay, it's still, still down.
Explorers, I know.
Okay.
When do you expect it up?
Yes.
I mean, when? Do you know when?
No, I have no idea.
Okay. I like that, yes. Any other questions? Thank you, Paul. It's always great to see that smile of yours. Yeah. Okay. Let's do Chief Dutra. And welcome back.
Thank you. Well, I just want to thank the council for their support while I've been gone this extended period of time. I appreciate it. I also want to thank my staff. I mean, couldn't be gone that long without having a very supportive staff. And then Lieutenant Smith did an amazing job filling in for me. So we were in constant contact, but still, I mean, it takes a lot to shoulder the entire department on top of, you know, all the other responsibilities he has. And he was FTO and another person, so that takes a lot as well, so kudos to him. I did a great job, so I'm appreciative of that. Our new evidence custodian started today, and she doesn't mind if we call her Allison 2.0. And that has a lot to do because she has two Ls in her name, and the first one had one L. So she's, she's an amazing person, and she's catching on quick, and she'll do a fantastic job. So super excited for that. It will take a little while for her, obviously, to get up to speed. Of course, we have to do a full 100% inventory audit, which means she has to understand what's going on before she can consume all of that, you know, and then understand what she's taking, the responsibility she's taken on before Rachel can dislodge herself from, you know, that sort of, that sort of stuff, that day-to-day operations. And so got a lot going on, and Rachel, she's in good hands with Rachel, because Rachel's done an amazing job with the evidence, so super cool. Our procurement sole source is on its way to DHS tomorrow, and that's for the grant involving the cameras and the body cam replacements for the entire department. We finally got all that, all the all the stuff we needed from Motorola and from DHS to do a sole source. And we're going to do a sole source on that because of all of the equipment that we currently have is, is, was, excuse me, watch guard, which of course was purchased by Motorola. And in order to keep things consistent in all the, you know, the items running fine, the servers in the backend and all that sort of stuff, it's much smoother to keep it the same. So DHS does allow us to do a sole source, so that's what we're going to do. It's about $120,000 of that $170,000 grant. So I expect the other two items on that grant to come forward to you soon. And once the sole source is approved by DHS, then it comes to the council for your nod. And then once that's done, then we can start getting that project underway. And of course, that'll be a six-month, six-to-eight-month rollout in order to get all that equipment purchased, programmed, and then distributed to the officers. So and then, of course, each car has to be gutted and replaced. So each system in each car is going to be replaced with a new one, most, most of them. So it's a long-term project, so keep you posted as we go. I just sent out a legislative request. It's an extension for the range project. So if you remember several years back, we got the legislative grant to do a location, a range location, to find a range location, excuse me. And legislators gave us $250,000. Well, we spent almost all of that. We have about $88,000 left. And sort of in order to get more time to finish that procurement process, I've asked them to extend that till 2025 June. And in that meantime, I'm going to petition the governor's office and ask him to hold true for his promise to give us some state land and, and maybe put that, put that range on some state property. And then also work hand-in-hand with the borough on the property that we've identified as a possible range location. So we're going to kind of do both of those together. So hopefully, one of those will pan out, and we'll end up with a range. So we're still going to put some effort to that, but of course, you guys, you know how assemblies are and borough and budget and timing. It just, you have to get all that stuff timed right. So it's going to take us a little bit of time to make sure we get all those ducks in a row. So I just asked them for a little bit more time to do that. So it looks like we're tentatively granted that time, so I'll keep you posted. I did attend a lot of meetings and attended to a lot of matters while I was gone. I also attended the APSC meeting that was held in Anchorage. I, of course, couldn't be there. That's a full-day event and difficult to be away, but it was definitely an interesting experience for sure. So I do appreciate the council and the mayor allowing me to be on that, on that committee. It's very informative, and it makes me appreciate all the work that we do to get compliance and policies and procedures and training that we do to stay out of those council meetings, because that's not a good place to be anyway. So I'm glad for that, and it teaches me a lot as a chief, how to do a better job. So I'm thankful for you for allowing me to attend that. We did conduct our final budget review with Tricia, and I'm super thankful for her and all her experience and, and helping us get through every year and not go over budget. So thank you, Tricia. And then I do want to say kudos to Emily for hiring Maggie, because I've worked with her already. I've been back a day, and I've already been working with her on several projects. And so she's got some marching orders. She's just amazing so far to work with, super knowledgeable, and not afraid to tell me no, so I like that. And I look forward to working with HR, and I am relieved that the position is filled, and I'm thankful the council's filled it. And I think Emily did a great job at filling that position, so I'm glad Emily's there. We did close out the SHSP grant for 2021 with the Fire Department Security System. That's done and completed, and we're excited about that. We just closed that the other day. I do, I do plan on giving you more talking points or presentation. I did speak to Councilman Jacobson about the traffic and traffic ordinance that you all had voted on delayed till February. So we got a little bit of work to do on that. I will come forward with more work on that. I do encourage the council members, if you have questions about the intent of that ordinance, please come see me. I'll be happy to answer those questions, and then I'll come forward to talking points. And again, a presentation when the, when the work session comes forward. So but I do encourage you to come talk to me, because a lot of these, a lot of these questions could be answered with simple conversations. And I do, I do apologize. There was a lot of other things going on in the police department, but I wanted to keep it short tonight. So if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Any questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Welcome back. Yep. Ms. Tricia? Don't blush.
I didn't really prepare anything for tonight, but I just wanted to let you guys know that it's busy time in Finance Department. Sally's been sending out 2024 business license quite, quite a lot. Big stack on her desk, so I really appreciate her being able to stay extra and work harder on that. We have to load the 2024 budget. I have more things on my to-do list than I have on my done list, so I promised to send you guys out financials. I just have one more budget adjustment to make that Steve talked about earlier. Then the budget for 2023 is set, and then you can look at the year-to-date versus budgeted items at that point. So I plan on getting that out this week.
Okay.
And that's really all I've got going on right now.
Okay. Any questions? Yes, Skip.
That's as wondering if that issue was resolved about the individual who misused the city credit card.
That was deducted from this paycheck.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Skips, for asking that, because I did forget that question.
The pole was wrecked that bad to where they couldn't reuse it? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Heineken?
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm glad to report that I made it back from my brief vacation over the holidays, and I hope everybody had a wonderful holidays. It was my first Christmas ever without snow, as I spent it in Texas. It was extremely odd, to be honest. I don't think I really liked that.
What part?
It was in eastern Texas, above Tyler area. My in-laws were tired there, so we were spending the holidays with them, which was a wonderful time. It was just the first time in 50 years I've spent a Christmas with no snow on the ground. So yeah, I kind of like North Pole's Christmas. Speaking of which, I think all of you know that it was another successful year with our caroling truck. No major issues or problems were reported to me as I was out of town, so I expect that no news was good news, and it went well, from what I'm hearing. So we're very proud of that tradition and plan to do it for many, many more years. The staff worked really hard to get the truck up and decorated this year. And, and we're going to try to actually get with Public Works and tie in with them. They're such experts at decorating the city that we've kind of feel like we're lacking a little bit with our squad. It's like we go out there and, yeah, it's lit up, but boy, it's not the quality that the rest of the city is seeing. So we might, might have to hit the Public Works folks up with some of their expertise for next year to decorate squad a little bit nicer even. But, but as always, it went very, very well. So with the beginning of the new year, this morning, I was looking over numbers from last year, and I'm very happy to report that we actually were down in emergency runs last year at the Fire Department. We were almost 100 shy of the previous year. Most, you know, entities want, you know, growth and progression. We love to see a decline in our numbers. That is absolutely our goal. That is, you know, prevention is one of our number-one priorities. And looking at it just very briefly, it's, it's majority ambulance calls that take up that. You know, we had a decrease in some of the EMS calls. So we're very happy with that, and we're going to work hard for 2024. Maybe we can decrease it again. That would be wonderful. But unfortunately, you know, it's been a very busy two days. We're not starting off on a good foot. The last two days have been extremely busy for our ambulance. So we'll see where 2024 takes us. And with that, that's all I have for tonight. I can answer any questions.
Any questions? None, seeing none? Thank you, Chief. Moving on. Let's move to Explore Fairbanks. Oh, no, 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 I'm sorry. I am so sorry. Now, three times a charm. Move to Emily.
Scott, I'll keep it short and sweet. So we had back-to-back meetings in December, which made December a whole lot of fun. We don't need to do back-to-back meetings for again, if I have a choice in it. But Maggie started last, a whole month ago now. She's doing an amazing job. Chief Dutra pointed it out. We have an eye on the code, so we have two eyes. We have four eyes. We have eight. I don't know if you have anything to add.
From that into HR?
Yes. Yes, she has. Her title is Human Resources Administrator and Deputy, Deputy City Clerk. Say that six times fast. And then, did we, there wasn't a borough meeting since the last, no? So Scott, without further ado, that brings us to Scott McCray with Explore Fairbanks.
And thank you so patiently waiting on us and our mistakes.
Believe it all.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and then Happy New Year to you. Thanks for this opportunity to come and kind of follow up on some of the things I mentioned in the email I sent to everyone on December 11th, as far as an overview of how 2023 was, some of the significant accomplishments for Explore Fairbanks, and a little bit about what 2024 looks like. So as I mentioned, I do apologize that we so abruptly withdrew from the bed tax process this year. My board of directors made the decision to do that the same day that those meetings were, were taking place. And I said in the email, you know, we're in a positive situation financially at Explore Fairbanks, and given the limited funds that North Pole has with its bed tax distribution, and the many worthy recipients you have who come before you, now we would withdraw from, from this year and give a chance to spread those dollars out within those entities in the community. Doesn't mean, might come back someday, and it certainly doesn't mean that, doesn't impact what we do as a marketing organization. You know, North Pole is a key part of how we market interior Alaska as a year-round destination. So nothing changes there, and we appreciate the partnership that we do have with the, with the city. So as far as how 2023 went, I think the best descriptor for it is it's kind of been a, it was, it's, that's 2023 is the past tense now. 2023 was a sporadic year. It seemed that there were, you know, months, you know, looking at hotels where weekends, they were completely sold out. Other weekends during the summer months where the, it was down, down a little bit. But I think by and large, when we look at all of our indicators, whether it be arrivals and departures at the Fairbanks International Airport, Alcan border crossings, which went up huge this, this last summer. Of course, the last few summers have been a bit challenged because of border crossing restrictions. And this year, despite gas prices, RVers seem to come back, come back pretty strongly. Alaska Railroad had a, has had a record year. They had a record year last year. So there's instances where things were better than, are better than 2019, and others where they're a bit down under 2019. And we kind of use 2019 as our barometer of when things were, back when things were kind of normal, and to see how the industry is doing now. And I would say that, I think, in terms of that normalcy definition, that 2023 felt closer to normal than we've seen in the last few years. A big one, too, not just in terms of success within the industry with visitation, but the workforce development issue, still by no sense perfect, still many issues there. It was a lot better this year than it was for 2022. In talking to our hoteliers and some of our other smaller businesses that are doing better in terms of labor. As far as accomplishments from Explore Fairbanks, I hope everyone had a chance to see our new destination video that was sent out in the, the link of the email on December 11th. We are beyond proud of it. It's, it's a tough, a tough act to try to wrap all that interior Alaska has to offer as a year-round destination into three and a half minutes. But it's, it's a beautiful video. And what's nice about the video is, so one, North Pole is in it quite a bit. So you'll see some familiar locations and, and people, Santa Claus, in it. It's not just a great tool for attracting visitors, but what we've seen done before, when we did our last destination video in 2014, it's a great recruiting tool to use. So the City of Fairbanks has used it for recruitment, the hospital. Other companies had put on their website, HR, to kind of showcase, it's not just what we have to offer to visitors, but to residents and future residents alike. So if you had a chance to see it, please, I encourage you to take a look at that. We did a complete redesign of our new visitor, of our visitors' guide and, and winter guide. I did bring copies with me. Again, North Pole is very prominent in both of these publications. We're happy with the new look that that has. We ventured into new international markets this year. You know, one of the, the markets that's been the slowest to come back since the pandemic is definitely international tourism. You know, for years in interior Alaska, our core international markets, primarily during that winter awards season, has been the Asian markets, Japan and China. Those markets are quite a ways away from coming back anytime soon. And are kind of our other bigger international market, German-speaking Europe, which we've had a presence in marketing-wise for, I think, close to 20 years now. It was kind of coming back this year, but I think we started to see some challenges with inflation impacting the decision of international visitors to come to the US. And it was kind of a double-edged sword, because there's also, because of the strength of the US dollar, a lot of domestic visitors, lower 48 visitors, were doing international trips this, this last year. So we'll kind of see going into this year how much inflation impacts, not just the international visitation, but domestic as well. We hosted two huge conferences, conventions this last year. The North American Travel Journalists Association Convention was held here in Fairbanks. About 70 travel journalists from across North America spent about a week in Fairbanks, North Pole, Denali, Arctic. We crammed a lot in, and a lot of great media coverage came out of that. And then back in October, we hosted the statewide tourism convention, the Alaska Travel Industry Association, about 500 attendees. Meetings and conventions, again, kind of like international markets, and those are kind of slower to come back to, but we definitely saw some progress this, this last year. I think probably the thing we're probably proudest about that we accomplished this year is we're really trying to ratchet up our efforts in community engagement with better educating and talking to residents within interior Alaska about what the visiting industry does, how it impacts the economy, and, and so forth. We started a new charitable program called the Golden Heart Giving this, this last year, where we host different pop-up charity events around town for various nonprofits. We did three of them this, this last year that raised funds for the Fairbanks Rescue Mission, one for the, the breadline, and then the other one, which was during the ATI convention, was for the City of Fairbanks Crisis Now Mobile Response Unit. We're looking to do more of those throughout the community Fairbanks, as well as North Pole, going into the next year. But we also started, for the first time, we've talked about this for years in our organization. You know, we're a partnership organization. You know, those businesses that are listed in our visitors' guide and so forth on our website are dues-paying members of Explore Fairbanks. It's the best deal of any tourism marketing organization in Alaska. It's been 250 a year. Organization in Alaska. It's been 250 a year, about 15 years now. Well, this last year we launched a new one that's completely free of charge. It's. Free of charge to businesses within the city of North Pole, Fairbanks, North Star Borough and City of Fairbanks. Acknowledging how bed tax funds, you know, help us, but it's $25 for businesses outside of the borough. And the idea is allow small businesses to be a part of the, I guess, the marketing machine that we are. So for that complimentary associate level. They get a free listing on our website, which gets about a million visitors a year. They get some narration images to upload. They get all of our. Communications opportunities to to network with other industry partners. Be a part of familiarization tours that we host. It's kind of just like opening the door slightly for them to be a part of the tourism family. What it also does too is it gives us a better. When visitors go to our website, for example, let's use Thai food restaurants. They go to Explore Fairbanks website, want to see, we hear Fairbanks has all these amazing Thai food restaurants. We have two. Thai food restaurants who are members of Explore Fairbanks. So by opening up this this complimentary. A level, trying to track restaurants and businesses, though we have a better depiction of what our destination has to offer. The final thing in regards to community engagement is we renamed our visitor services and partnership development to visitor and community engagement. And the person who took on the role of our community engagement manager who was with us this last year is North Pole's very own Juanita Webb, who is. Going to do an amazing job in that position as far as someone who's active in the community. She's going to be a wonderful ambassador for us. I think that's everything that I wanted to touch upon, but more importantly, I wanted to have the opportunity to answer any questions you might have of me this evening.
Any questions? Yes.
Scott, thank you for all that you do for marketing Fairbanks and interior Alaska, North Pole. And it's amazing that you continue to support North Pole. Over the years and that we have a strong presence, not only in your marketing publications, but also in the. In the new marketing video. I love that. When I watched it, it really was moving. So well done.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
And I just have a quick question. Do you know if the parking garage took advantage of the associate level for being a business partner so that we could?
I believe they made an inquiry. I heard, yes.
I just want to make sure that that's available because it's. A good place, a good service for visitors to have safe parking in the downtown area.
Yeah, it's my understanding. I did, I think, inquired and are. Doing the paperwork as we speak.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions before I ask mine? Scott, you said that you had three charitable organizations. So what were they again?
They were the Fairbanks Rescue Mission. The the breadline, Stone Soup Cafe. And then the the Crisis Now Mobile Response Unit that's operated through the city of Fairbanks. And I just recalled, we actually did a fourth one. In December for the door.
That's right. Okay. And what are you planning on doing for this coming year? What?
We haven't identified any, yeah, any organizations yet. What we tried to do is encourage our business partners to. Say, you know, this is something we would, this is an entity we'd like to support and we'll host it here and we help them with the marketing and organizing. And that was the case with the the. Fairbanks Rescue Mission. No, I'm sorry. The breadline was Fountainhead Development, wanted to do something for them. And then with. The crisis now, the Alaska Salmon Bake wanted to focus on them.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Any other questions? Seeing none? Thank you, Scott, for coming out.
Thank you all. Happy New Year, everyone.
Okay. And you look like you even went and took a tan, right? Did you leave? Did you go on a vacation? Any other questions? Okay. Unfinished business. New business, Resolution 2401, City of North Pole Legislation Priorities.
Move to adopt Resolution 2024 dash 01. Resolution establishing the city of North Pole Legislative Priorities for the 34th Legislature 24, 2024 regular session.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Seeing none?
Okay. Resolution 2401, Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Keller?
Yes.
And that brings us to Resolution 2402, the Northern Alaska Railroad Legislative Priority.
Is there any public testimony forgotten on the last one?
Oh. Was there any public testimony for Resolution 2401 or 2402? Thank you, Jeff.
Seeing none?
Move to adopt Resolution 2024 zero dash 02, a resolution of the of the North Pole City Council supporting efforts and funding to extend the Northern Rail to Delta Junction.
Second.
Um, one quick piece of cleanup. All council members signed on for 202402. Would all council members like to sign on the legislative priorities? 2401?
Yes.
I will make that update.
And that'll go for the same for O2?
O2 had it all listed. But here for cleanup, I thought I'd ask. And so for Resolution 2402. Northern Northern Alaska Railroad Legislative Priority. Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Okay. And that. That brings us to the appointment to the Fairbanks North Star Borough Historical Preservation Committee.
Any questions in regards to that?
Do we make a motion move to approve the appointment of John Poirier to the Fairbanks North Star Borough Historic Preservation Committee?
Second.
Okay, on the motion to appoint John Poirier to the Fairbanks North Star Borough Historical Preservation Committee, Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
And Mr. Jacobson. And that brings us to the memo on the JAG grant acceptance.
Yes, let's have Chief Dutra.
Alrighty, I only brought one page.
That's okay.
So I'm.
Left us with a lot.
This this grant, of course, is quite extensive. A lot of paperwork goes along with it. You've been supplied, but. We've written this grant over quite a long time. I think we've been applying for it since 2009. And this is the largest payout that we've seen from this grant, so. Kudos, kudos to Lieutenant Smith because he find to my master crafted a grant that I had from years back. So he took it and tweaked it a little bit. So. You know, I don't know if you're going to say grats to him or me, but good team effort. You did a good job. Hundred seventeen thousand dollars. You know, we we start off with getting this grant to fund the entire cost associated with our. JAG officer, we call it a JAG officer, but he's the officer, the detective, excuse me, that's assigned to the drug unit. Full time that helps combat illegal importation of alcohol and drugs into the villages across the northern region of the state. As well as drug interdiction for the interior and as it stretches, of course, across the state and, you know, we we started, we started this. Funding this position back 2008 without any any grant funding. So since 2009, we've been receiving this JAG grant funding to help augment the costs. And it's pretty much been covering the cost of this position since then. We start off putting the math together to figure out that it covers a position. Of course, then we get, you know, the council to change the wages. So this. This almost covers almost all of the costs associated. There's still a little bit, a little bit there that'll help, but this is significantly more than we've gotten in the past. So we're super stoked. It does cover the November 1st, which retro retroactive to November 1st, covering the costs that we've incurred. You know, of course, when November 1st hit, we don't have this grant approved. I always got to start going, okay, got to watch the budget, you know, and to make sure we cover costs. If it doesn't come through. But they always, of course, come through and then we have to, then we can breathe a little bit and. Thank goodness they cover the costs from November 1 to the end of the year, 2023, and then it takes over the costs until the grant starts again next year. So. It goes through September 30 of next year. So we'll apply for the grant again and again. So it's pass through money coming from the federal government to the state and the state distributes it to. At least the three locations, the major hubs in the state of Alaska. We're one of those agencies that puts in for this grant and done a great job at funding it. So. I've encouraged the council to approve this. Like I said, in the memo here, it is $27,000 higher than last year. So. It's a huge change boost to the budget for sure, the bottom line of our budget. So. Yeah, if you have any questions about that, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions? Any questions? Seeing none? Okay, can we put this to a?
Public testimony.
Oh, yeah, public testimony.
Was there anybody that would like to publicly testify on this item? I have nobody online.
Seeing none?
Move to approve the acceptance of the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant funds in the amount of 172,028.
I'll second.
Okay, on the JAG grant acceptance, Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
And Mr. Keller?
Yes.
That brings us to council member comments.
Thank you. Chief?
Thank you.
You're starting with who first?
Oh, um, we'll mix it up. Let's start with Mr. Skips tonight.
I just want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and stay safe. That's all.
Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you. With the start of every new year gives us new opportunities to improve and to try to be better. My goal this year is to. Be kinder than I have been in the past. Not that I've been an unkind person, but I think there's a lot of kindness needed in the world today. And that's what I'm going to be focusing on in all aspects of my life. I just want to do a shout out to our mayor pro tem, Shandra Clack. She has been doing an amazing job. Taking up extra responsibilities to cover for the mayor while he's out ill and recovering. And she's been putting in a lot of time and I just really appreciate her efforts. And coming in to work with the staff and make sure that things are being signed and processed. So thank you very much for. Taking on that extra responsibility.
You're welcome. And a thank you goes to that too. I enjoy it.
And that brings us to Mr. Williams.
You know, when you said. What we have to. But I am listening. Okay, I am listening and recording. The wife don't thinks I record, but I am recording. Just want you to know that. But it's very important that we always try and do better. And most important, what we have to remember is treat people the way you want to be treated. So we have to remember that. And that's all I got for this time.
Uh, Mr. Church?
Pretty short and sweet. Happy New Year. Welcome, Maggie. Thank you. Thank you, Shandra, to the to the job you've been doing and Emily. As well for training Maggie and getting her up to speed. Chiefs. Great to see you again and thank you, Paul, for filling in this evening. I know it's above and beyond and we appreciate it.
Mr. Keller?
Happy New Year. What a. Great way to start a new year. With a new outlook. It's a good time to reflect on where we've been and where we're going. So. Yeah, Happy New Year. I I'm. Feel a lot of what has been said already of. Doing better and. Yeah. That's, those are good words to. To kind of follow up with. And then. Mr. Williams, he said something that. Immediately brought forth an experience of he who first, he who does not have sin first, cast the first stone. And a lot of times we forget that we have a beam in our eye. So well have faults, including myself. Just talk to my wife. She'll tell you. All of them. That makes two of us. However, she does like my cooking for most of the time, so I've got that down. But New Year, new you, new me and a new outlook on North Pole. So.
And that brings us to Mayor Pro Tem Clack.
Happy New Year, everybody. I want to thank everybody for the great job they're doing. I'm thanking God for all the smiles I see in here this evening. And all the people who had a nice trip and have returned back nice and safe. I want to thank our board that we have and how we've come together as a collective whole. Making our community a better place. And that's all I have to say. I want everybody to have a nice, safe trip. As they're driving around back and forth to work and to schools and stuff because that'll be starting next week. I want to thank Maggie for coming on board. And being our new age person and deputy clerk. I've had the honor of speaking and talking with her and she's been great. And Emily, you and I both got to get better about skipping stuff on our agenda. But other than that, we're good. All right.
And that brings us to the executive session. So we'll have to close down audio and everybody needs to leave. We'll come back on the record to adjourn.
So do we need to make make a motion move to go into an executive session to discuss the voice versus?
Yes, you are correct, Jeff. Was that Jeff making the motion?
Yes, he is.
Second. Keller, second.
And we can do a roll call on that if you'd like. Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Ms. Clack?
Yes.
Mr. Church?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Williams? And Mr. Jacobson?
Thank you. Thanks, Paul.